I'll call the meeting to order at 7:03. Can we have a rule call, please?
Dustin Allred.
Present.
Lou Hopkins.
Here.
Deb McFarland. Bill Rose.
Here.
Karen Sims.
Here.
Chen Shi Yu.
Here.
Will Andreessen. And Andrew Fell.
All right, so it looks like we have a form. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have our friends from the Regional Planning Commission here to give a presentation during the study session under K. I was hoping that we could move that up to sometime before the continued public hearing, so perhaps right after communications.
Okay, do we need a motion for that?
I believe you do, yes.
Okay.
I move.
We have a motion by Mr. Hopkins, their second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rose. Can we do a voice vote?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor of moving the Long Range Transportation Plan presentation to after communications, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Approval of the minutes, so we have two previous meeting minutes to approve. Approval of the minutes from the September 19th, 2024 regular meeting of the Plan Commission. We should, can we do these together, or do we need to do these separate? I forget what we do on these.
I mean, you can, you could do them together if you'd like.
Okay. And the October 3rd, 2024 regular meeting of the Plan Commission. Are there any comments on the minutes from these last two meetings? Or are we ready to make a motion?
I move for approval of both.
So we have a motion by Mr. Rose, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sims. Any discussion? All right, so we'll do a voice vote on that as well. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that passes. That brings us to communications. Do we have any communications?
No, we do not. Sorry, I didn't get a copy of that.
Oh.
Would you mind summarizing that?
Okay, I haven't actually had a chance to read it, so. Let me peruse this for a second here. Not that long, why don't I just read it? Because I don't want to not do it justice. So this is an email from Liz Cardman, West Urbana. Says, "Not able to attend on the 3rd. Please read the following into the record. At the Plan Commission meeting of September 19th, Mr. Huber asked why if West Urbana was opposed to increasing duplexes, it did not apply to have the entire area rezoned R1. To those of us who live in West Urbana, that seems like a good option to consider. However, please note that under the longstanding zoning regulations, the lot sizes and dimensions between the two zones are radically different. R1 lot size is 50% greater than an R2 lot size, as well as setbacks and required side yards are also greater for R1 districts. Walk down west Michigan makes the difference readily apparent. The south side of the street is R1, the north side of the street is R2. Hope this clarification is helpful for future discussions." Okay, so that would bring us to the LRTP presentation then.
There we go. My name is Susan Bergstrom. I am the Planning Manager at Regional Planning Commission. And tonight, we're here to provide a little bit of overview of the Long Range Transportation Plan 2050. The Regional Planning Commission staff has been working on this in consultation with all of our member agencies, including the City of Urbana staff, to create this plan over the last two years. So I wanted to acknowledge that we've had great help on our steering committee from Kevin and also Marcus, John Zeeman and others to help guide us through Urbana's perspective in creating this plan. So the LRTP 2050 is a web plan, so we've made it so that everything is on the website instead of a paper document. We find that to be more accessible and reachable by more people. And the web plan has six sections. We have an overview that goes a little bit over the history of transportation planning in our area. And also includes updates and new information on an updates webpage. We have existing conditions for the area that include land use, transportation, environment, demographics, 2020 census data. We also have a goals section, 2050 vision section, that includes future projects and implementation measures. A public involvement section and appendices that have more detail is about the tools and models that we have used to help forecast population employment projections, as well as how the transportation system might look in 25 years. To give a little background, the Champaign-Urbana urban area transportation study has been around for decades, and we've been doing transportation planning for quite some time. We have a census designated urban area that is Champaign-Urbana-Savoy and Bonville that changes with every decennial census. And then by federal mandate, the Long Range Transportation Plan has to include a metropolitan planning area, which is any area that we believe is going to become part of the urban area in the next 25 years. And so with that, we also include the Village of Tolono and the Village of Mohamed and a little bit of the rural areas outside of those communities. The five goals that we have for the LRTP 2050 are safety, reliability, sustainability, equity and quality of life, and connectivity. And under each of those goals, we have a goal statement that summarizes what we think those are about. We have objectives and we have measurable targets to let us know how well we are achieving the plan over the next 25 years. And then we also have strategies that identify activities that we can undertake along with our member agencies and community members to help realize this plan, and we identify responsible parties as part of those strategies. In doing the transportation plan, we really try to take into account all of the existing plans in all of our communities. And unfortunately, as often happens in planning, our timing of our planning process over the last two years did not line up with Urbana's process for creating Imagine Urbana in time for us to integrate fully what your process has done. But I do feel there's a lot of great overlap in our goals and objectives and strategies. So I do have a few slides here that kind of just illustrate how the LRTP is reflecting Urbana's plans. So one of the Urbana goals has a strategic area of infrastructure, and obviously that is related to transportation and how things develop over time. And at the bottom of this slide, you'll see a short list of some of the ways that our strategies help achieve your strategies. So we are always looking for and applying for grant opportunities when they're relevant, not only for the Regional Planning Commission, but also for our member agencies. So we are always eager to try to involve our member agencies in potential funding for transportation projects, but also transportation-related plans. We also do an annual sidewalk inventory and assessment. And we have a strategy to complete street connections to in-between the downtown areas. And we also definitely want to promote strategic investment in disadvantaged areas of all of the communities here, so that we can integrate residents' ideas into our planning processes in the development of transportation infrastructure projects and also the construction of those projects. Another Urbana strategy is to increase investments in infrastructure equity. And this is reflected in all five of the LRTP goals. We are, one of the strategies that we have in the LRTP is to encourage improved accessibility to transportation options, and especially in economically disadvantaged areas. We also want to support projects that improve commute options for low-income workers. And we also want to continue the expansion and connection of pedestrian bicycle facilities so that we get fewer cars on the road and provide more options for everyone in our community in how they are able to travel. Another strategy that we found from Urbana is to expand sustainable infrastructure within the community, and this again complies with all five of our goals. We are looking to increase the development encouraged through infill versus what happens on the fringe of the community. And to my understanding, with talking with Urbana staff, that that's also what you're looking to do in the future. We want to increase accessibility to transit services by filling the gaps in sidewalk connections. And we also want to look at climate change, and we've recently received a grant to look at the vulnerability of our transportation infrastructure here in Champaign-Urbana area based on climate change impacts. And we're going to be starting that project in January 2025. So we look forward to working with everyone in that planning process. Economic health is another strategic area for the City of Urbana, supporting local businesses. We always want to, through the transportation system, we think we can improve and support local businesses by looking at the public transit routes and service times to make sure that the transit services meeting not only the needs of residents to get to those businesses, but the employees as well. And we also would like to explore public-private partnerships to look at multimodal infrastructure improvements to benefit surrounding businesses. Urbana's strategic area number four, economic health, has a strategy to enhance employment opportunities in Urbana. And some of the strategies in the LRTP related to that are to promote transportation policies and projects that result in greater job creation. We also want to see industrial subdivisions planned so that we can efficiently connect the employees, clients and goods with the existing transportation infrastructure, so making connections with sidewalks, with bike facilities, public transit, not just cars. So that's, it's something very important to us. And then we also have a tool called QWAT's Access Score that helps to determine how difficult it is for different, for people to travel along different transportation modes, like public transit, buses, walking and biking. And so we have a tool that helps us determine how difficult it is for residents to do that, and that can help us guide in the future to make development recommendations. The vision for the LRTP 2050 has five different sections. The first is that the LRTP 2045 status is looking back at the strategies from what we developed five years ago and approved five years ago, and also looking at how the projects that were identified in the plan for 2045 are coming along in the last five years. We have a future project section that includes both funded and unfunded priorities. And we have scenario modeling that details the different tools that we've used to help identify how our transportation system can best evolve in the next 25 years. The funding section is something that's required by federal mandate. We have to have a fiscally constrained transportation plan. And so we'll see in that section how we projected funding levels for local, state and federal funding for transportation projects. And finally, we have an implementation section, and that's just to guide us in doing the tasks related to making this transportation plan happen. Under the future projects section, some of the upcoming projects for this impact or are within the City of Urbana area include complete streets projects, where we're trying to make sure that road projects are also going to make sure to include bicycle and pedestrian facilities so that everyone has multiple options for traveling in that corridor. So we have Lincoln Avenue from Washer Drive to Killarney Drive as a complete street project. And we also have Florida Avenue between Wright Street and Hillcrest Drive. I should mention that the projects listed here are already in the Urbana Capital Improvements Plan, so it's something that we're just making sure we reflect your already existing plans in what we're putting in for the future for the area. Other agencies also have projects that are impacting Urbana. The University of Illinois is proposing Pennsylvania Avenue improvements from the Urbana city limit east to Lincoln Avenue. We have the MTD wanting to put a transit center in Urbana. And MTD also growing their hydrogen bus fleet toward more sustainable transportation options. And then we also have a project by IDOT for the US-150, Illinois-130 corridor between University and Avenue and Illinois-130 High Cross Road to make ADA improvements. And then a couple of bicycle and pedestrian projects we have mentioned are Baker's Lane Shared Use Path and Florida Avenue Shared Use Path, both of which are in your Capital Improvements Plan. The LRTP has highlighted a few projects because the LRTP is supposed to be a regionally, it's supposed to be a regional perspective on transportation planning. It's not going to look at the very detailed parts of like small side streets in any particular community, it's going to be about the regional perspective. And so we find that North Lincoln Avenue fits the bill for a regionally significant project. This is in the future projects list to occur before 2030. It fills all five of the LRTP goals. And then it also follows with quite a few of our related objectives, such as improving safety, sustainability, improving multimodal accessibility, and toward completing the complete streets policy that we have all signed on to. So for the regionally significant projects, we have created project profile sheets that are in PDF format linked on the website, and one of them is for the North Lincoln Avenue from Washer to Killarney improvements. And we basically got all the information from that project profile from the Capital Improvements Plan. Likewise, we have Florida Avenue is another regionally significant project. We find that this is going to help improve safety and also reliability for bicyclists and pedestrians in the area. It's going to increase the share of active transportation modes in our area and not just have that area mostly related to automobiles. And it's also going to increase the mileage of bike facilities, which is also a goal of several other plans that already exist, such as the Greenways and Trails Plan from 2014. The Vine Street project between Main Street and California Avenue improvements, I guess it's Vine Street as well as California Avenue. Regionally significant because it's a commuter area for, you know, it's bigger than just a neighborhood street, and we find that it's going to help improve safety. It's going to help more than automobiles share that space in a safe manner. And it's also going to increase our total sidewalks that are going to be compliant with ADA. So that's just covering some of the future projects that have guaranteed funding sources according to the capital improvement plans, but we also have a list of illustrative projects. And those projects are prioritized by our member agencies, but they don't have a guaranteed funding source at this time. It's possible that they will not in the 25 years to come, but they're still considered priorities. And so some of those that we have listed related to Urbana would be Curtis Road improvements between First Street and Philo Road. And if that comes to fruition, we could also look at shared use paths along Ray Street between Windsor and Curtis, and also Philo Road from Windsor to Curtis. So it's development-dependent, and it's something that we hope will happen, but just don't have that funding at this point. Kohler Avenue between Green Street and Main Street, doing pavement and bridge rehab is another project that does not have funding. We also have a variety of other here that are pavement rehabilitation, such as Florida Avenue, Cottage Grove Avenue, Philo Road, Pennsylvania Avenue. And then we have one listed from the Capital Improvements Project that is Lincoln Avenue north and south of Summer Drive up in the industrial area. Want to tell you a little bit about the public outreach that we've done over the last two years. Phase one was from April through October of 2023. And in that time period, we attended 13 community events. Showing surveys, taking surveys and having interactive map opportunities for people to identify transportation patterns, travel obstacles, and also the demographics of our community. During Phase Two, which was April through July of this year, we talked more about people's goals and how they would prioritize future projects. We attended 12 community events and did surveys and had map opportunities for people to work on. And then we also did a special survey distribution through the University of Illinois Division of Management Information in July. And right now, we are in Phase Three, which started September 16th and will go through November 8th of this year. And during that time, we are giving presentations like the one we're giving tonight, reviewing the draft plan and taking public comments. Within the City of Urbana, these are the outreach opportunities that we attended during the last two years. The Marathon Expo brought a lot of traffic our way, so we were able to get some good input at that. The Jazz Walk at Meadowbrook Park in 2023, several different weekends where we are at the Urbana Market at the square. We were at Jettie Rhodes Neighborhood Day in both years. The Climate Action Celebration at Crystal Lake Park in 2023, and a Neighborhood Nights at Crestview Park this year. The next steps for us are to complete Round Three, like I said, through November 8th. And during that time, we are also organizing all the comments we received over the last two years that we are going to share, organized by jurisdiction, so the City of Urbana will get every comment that is relevant to the City of Urbana from the last two years to use in its own planning efforts. And then we also have a final steering committee meeting on November 22nd, where we're asking the steering committee to sign off on the final LRTP. And then QWAT's Technical and Policy Committees will have the LRTP final document brought before them for final approval in early December 2024. And we will have this sent into IDOT and Federal Highway Administration by the end of this year. I think it's important to mention that without the LRTP, federal and state funding cannot come to transportation projects in our area if those projects are not listed in the LRTP. So we've been trying to reiterate with all the member agencies and the public to make sure that the projects that they have in their plans are in the LRTP, because we only update this document every five years. It's easiest for everyone to make sure everything's included by the end of every five-year span instead of having to do amendments in between. But we can do amendments if we must, so if priorities change, we're here to, you know, back that up. With that, I am happy to take any questions or comments you have.
All right, thank you for your presentation. Any questions for Ms. Bergstrom? Mr. Hopkins?
I've got a, hello. I do know who you are. Took me a while to remember, but.
It's been a little bit.
Yeah, just a while. I'm trying to get back into my own head our updated projects. And without a map, I can't keep track of it. So what's the status of the extension of Olympian Drive?
In terms of the future expansion between Cunningham and the current eastern terminus of it?
Yes.
That was, according to a staff meeting I had with Urbana, with Kevin and Carol and also John Zeeman, they have determined that that is not a high priority as other projects in the area because it's helping bypass access to the city. But it is listed as an illustrative project in the LRTP.
It is listed, okay, because it's not listed here.
Yeah, there's actually 56 illustrative projects, so I didn't put all of them in the presentation. I think there's 19 from the City of Urbana.
Okay, but as you just pointed out, it's important that they be there if in the future we want to change it because of funding sources. So that's why I'm asking the question.
That's exactly right.
And that, I did try to look at this online, but in contrast to some, apparently most people, I find it harder to find everything online.
Understood.
So that complete list is in the online version of the draft plan?
Yes, it is.
Okay. While I'm at it, what about the Florida Avenue extension?
Florida Avenue extension out to High Cross Road is listed as an illustrative project.
Okay. Now, it apparently is discussion within the City of Urbana, which we can have about our comprehensive plan. It's not clear to me that the highest priorities are the multi-use paths, shared use paths, going all the way to Curtis Road. And this is in part because it's not clear that that's the direction that makes sense for development in terms of what we're doing. I'm not sure how to deal with that in the current context. And maybe we just treat that as something to deal with in the future since these are also just illustrative projects. Now, the illustrative projects are not prioritized, or are they?
The illustrative projects are, we don't prioritize them by timeframe or anything. They're just something that we list in the plan to make sure they're there.
Okay, so they're all listed with equal status?
That's correct.
Okay, so as long as they're all there.
And a lot of them are ones that you will find in the Urbana Capital Improvement Plan, kind of toward the back section where they're saying, "These things are unfunded, but they're important," so.
Yes, okay. The question of importance or priority or whatever, among them, we can deal with on our own.
Any other questions for Ms. Bergstrom? I have a question. So the City of Urbana goals that you reference, and you talk about them in terms of strategic area, number, where do those come from? I'm just curious, because they don't seem to line up with the draft comprehensive.
It's from the Urbana Strategic Plan, created by the council, so not from the Imagine Urbana.
Okay.
So at the time that we were creating this document, especially even up to the last few months, we didn't have direct access to what was in the Imagine Urbana Plan.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. So that brings us to our continued public hearing. That's Plan Case Number 2493, T24, a request by David Huber to amend Article Six of the Urbana Zoning Ordinance to eliminate lot width and area requirements for two-family dwellings in the R2 single-family residential and R3 single and two-family residential zoning districts. Just for some background, so we continued this hearing at the point where Plan Commission was in discussion, and we had asked staff to revisit was in discussion, and we had asked staff to revisit the proposed changes, looking at the larger section that these changes sit within. So before we re-enter discussion, I'm going to ask staff to give us an update on those proposed revisions.
All right. Thank you. All right. So I'm going to go through each of these. You all received these in the packet, in the supplemental memorandum. So I'm just going to kind of dive right in. So the proposed changes, there were four sort of proposed changes to this Section 6.3. Those are, again, those are detailed in your supplemental memorandum, but I've also got them right here. So if I can get this up, I'll put these up while I'm talking through it. If I can get this full screen, that would be great. There we go. Okay. All right. So the first change is to... So you recall this Paragraph 6.3A, sort of long. It had several different dates to identify in different districts that you could... You were considered a... You could basically use any lot created before these certain dates for any use in the district. So it was saying, if your lot doesn't meet the minimum area and/or width, you could still use that lot for whatever uses are allowed in that district. So I think prompted by something that Mr. Rose said in the last hearing, he asked if we really needed those dates in there. And when I really dug into it, it turns out that, well, I'm suggesting that we really don't need those. Essentially, what this whole paragraph is saying is that if you break it down, it's saying, if a lot was created before a certain date, it does not need to meet the minimum area and width requirements. If it was created after a certain date, it needs to meet the minimum area and width requirements. The most recent of these dates is 1979, so that's 45 years ago. So I think it's unnecessary that after 45 years, we need to adhere to these specific cutoff dates at all, because any lot that was created in the past 45 years would have had to meet the minimum standards in place, so it would be a conforming lot. So any lot that's really existing now is either going to be either going to have met those minimum standards or have been created before them, in which case they were already exempted by this long, convoluted paragraph. So I think this is actually an older version of the proposed change, because I realized that I needed to add one exception. So I'll get into that here in a second. But this paragraph can be simplified by just adding sort of two short paragraphs here. One is just saying, if you're making a new lot. So for new lots, the minimum lot area and width requirements are set forth in Table 6.3. And for existing lots, there are no minimum lot area or width requirements. That... All of that kind of encapsulates what that paragraph is saying. It also does one other curious thing, which is that it refers to Table 6.3, which has those standards, which our current language actually didn't do. It didn't explicitly say, "Go to this table for the standards." It would also... It's not listed here, but in your memo, under the new Paragraph A, I'm also proposing to say, "Exception: New lots for common lotline dwellings are accepted." So it refers you to a new Paragraph 6.3D3 below, which I'll get to in a minute. Okay. Proposed Change Number Two is the same as last time around. So it's the original thing we were coming to Section 6.3 about, which is getting rid of these additional width and area requirements for duplexes. So the reasons we went through those last time, we discussed them, they're in your previous staff memo as well. The third changes are really minor, because this next section is about the MOR, the Mixed Office Residential District. And this is a section that works very well. It works as intended. So the intent of this paragraph, which right now, all of the things you see on the screen are actually in one big paragraph, so it's kind of hard to parse out. But the intent is so that you don't have lots in the district, you don't have people combining several lots and then building one big building that's out of scale for the district. So this, in practice, it works really well. So we're not proposing to change anything. We're just proposing to take that paragraph, split it into a paragraph with a couple of sub-paragraphs, so that it's easier to follow, and then making a couple of sort of minor language tweaks there. And then finally, for Proposed Change Number Four, what this is essentially doing is looking at common lotline dwellings and making basically the same changes that we'd be making for duplexes, which is sort of getting rid of the additional lot width and area requirements for common lotline dwellings, but also explicitly stating that they would have no minimum lot area if you're creating a new common lotline dwelling, and then also giving a minimum street frontage of 20 feet, which that 20 feet matches what's sort of in some of the paragraphs above. So you'd need a minimum of 20 feet for a common lotline dwelling. The reason I'm proposing no minimum lot area is because this would essentially mirror what we're doing for duplexes, which is, you know, if you have a duplex that is, you know, that's under the current standard, say it's 5,000 square feet, but it was, you know, but it's an existing lot, with the other changes, we're saying you could use that for a duplex. So what this is saying is that you could also use it for a common lotline dwelling, because we're not setting some sort of arbitrary minimum lot area as well. So it's... The intent is you could use it for a duplex, you could use it for a common lotline dwelling, or you could use it for whatever other uses are allowed in the district. I think that kind of covers the proposed changes, so I'm looking forward to any questions or discussion that we might have. Oh, before I move on to that, I did note in the staff memo, there's some questions last time about, you know, if we pull these levers on making changes to these certain things, is it going to mess up anything in other parts of the ordinance? I combed through, I couldn't find anywhere that I thought that this would sort of create, you know, some consequence that we're not expecting here. So, yes, and we'd recommend approval of this in its current form that you have in your memos.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Any questions for staff? Ms. Hopkins?
Can you scroll to the new, the clean new version?
Oh, the clean new version. Let me pull that up. I think I've got it somewhere.
I'm trying to catch a typo, I think.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, I thought it was just further down.
Supplemental memo. No, I... That was a bespoke document I created just for this meeting. But, yeah, we've got... Okay. That's existing. Okay. And then the clean one is all the way at the end. So right here. Oops. That's not going to help us. Sorry about that. Which part of it?
Okay. I think it is clean. There was an error in the markup.
Okay.
But it's not here. And when you were talking, I suddenly thought I wasn't sure that it gave the right reference in the first item to those. Okay. So a couple of questions. A common lotline building is going to require a new lot?
Yes, almost certainly.
And a new lot has to be 60 feet unless it's a common lotline building?
Correct. That's why I added that exception language in there.
In R2 and R3, only semi-detached, that is, only two-unit common lotline are permitted, not multi-unit common lotline, that only available R4.
Yes.
That implies that I could create two common lotline units, that is, a, what I would call semi-detached, on 40 feet. Is that what we mean?
That is what it means. It would also require five-foot side yards, so I'm not sure, you know, maybe there's not... You know, architects might be able to make that happen.
I mean, you could certainly do it in 20. You might have 50 feet anyway.
Yeah.
So with the side yards. And I realize you've got to have a side yard on both ends. That seems a little strange, but that's for discussion. I just want to make sure that's what it implies.
And I want to... I'll add, though, is that with these changes, you would also be able to do a duplex on that same lot.
Now, wait a minute. On the 20-foot lot?
No. It would be... You could do a duplex on the 40-foot lot, if you can make it work with the other development regulations.
I understand that, but not on a 40-foot new lot? But I could do a common lotline on a 40-foot new lot, because I can do one on I think we need to think that through, but the... So another question. A common lotline unit is a dwelling unit or a permitted zoning use unit? That is, if I can build a duplex in the district and I can do a common lotline building on a 20-foot lot, can I put a duplex common lotline unit on each of those 20-foot lots?
If I understand your question, I would say no, but let me read the... I might ask you to state that again, just so I make sure I understand it.
I've read stuff, but it's a little bit ambiguous. What constitutes a building, a lot and unit, and a dwelling unit? And we could go to the definitions in the zoning ordinance, but I'm not sure they're specific enough. In any case, just, we can talk about this.
Okay.
It turns out not to be a simple question with an answer. I think those are my questions.
Any other questions for staff? I had a somewhat related question, which is, I'm trying to understand, so number three in Section D for the common lotline dwelling units, where it says, "Each new lot for a common lotline dwelling shall have no minimum lot area," that seems to contradict the table, which says for new lots, they'll need to meet, you know, the requirements. Is that the intention?
So the intent is to have... Because common lotlines are sort of their own animal. The intent is to direct people to the table for everything except common lotlines, or common lotline dwelling units. So, yeah, so I was trying to figure out a way to create the exception. So when up here in the new Paragraph A, it just states, "Exception is new lots for common lotline dwellings." You have to see that paragraph.
So the only form standard for common lotline dwellings would be a street frontage of 20 feet?
The only standards pertaining to lot area and width. They still have to... I think there's still the language that says, yeah, they still have to meet floor area or, yeah, floor area, open space, front yards, and rear yards.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
So at this point, we'll restart our discussion. So is there any discussion on the revised language for the proposed changes? Ms. Hopkins?
First, credit to the simplification of the first. I get your logic, and it's wonderful.
Thank you.
So, under definitions, as long as people read the definitions, I guess this question is answered. So dwelling, comma, common lotline, a dwelling unit that adjoins another dwelling unit at a common lotline, with each dwelling unit being located on its own separate lot, and within a common lot... And within a common lotline development approved by the City of Urbana. Each common lotline dwelling unit is legally eligible for separate... So there are a bunch of things in there. It does specify that what the two things are are dwelling units, so they can't be duplexes, which may or may not be a good thing. But for what we're working with at the moment, I think it's a good thing. And in a common lotline development approved by the City of Urbana. So this comes to the other question about the... If I have a lot that's a 60-foot lot, and I want to put three... Well, I can't in R3, so forget that. That... We're not talking about R4. Well, actually, we are, because this applies to all zoning categories.
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
Yes.
So in R2 and R3, we can only have semi-detached. In R4 and above, we can have multi-unit common lotline developments. I read the common lotline dwelling unit as meaning that there is some separate Urbana approval, which presumably is either exactly or analogous to subdivision approval. Presumably, if I'm doing a two-lot subdivision, that's a minor subdivision. I don't remember what the breakpoint is.
It's five, if it's more than five units.
More than five lots?
Yeah. In my time here, we've done a couple of minor developments for common lotline subdivisions. Yes.
Meaning less than five?
Correct. Yeah, it's just for... Because there's... Like, if you go down Vine Street near Windsor, there's a lot of duplexes there. You wouldn't know, but some are common lotlines now, because they just subdivided them so they could have separate ownership.
Which raises another code issue, but we don't need to go there. So we could be talking about approving what, to me, is an effect condoization, but it's not identical anyway. We could separate the ownership of an existing building, which would require minor subdivision, or we could approve a demolition, construction, or new lot, which would also be a minor... Well, in any case, it would be a subdivision approval under this. Okay. So that all sort of works for me. The only thing that's a little puzzling is the confusion that Dustin also got to of whether we... Whether it makes sense to a... Whether it makes sense to allow a pair of semi-detached 20-20 as a lot option. I guess it doesn't really matter, because it has to be approved anyway.
Was that, I'm, I mean, I have, I'm trying to think of an example. So the, let's say that there were three common lot line units. So the interior unit that didn't have any yard requirements, that could have a width of 20 feet. It would need to have a width of 20 feet. And we don't have our architect, well, maybe Mr. Rose. Is this, I mean, is that realistic, or?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I guess it's just, there's no depth requirement that's implied there, so... These can be tiny homes, I suppose, then?
Perhaps.
20-foot row houses in Philadelphia wouldn't be...
Yeah.
Challenge, but yes.
I guess it's just the question of, do we care about there being no minimum depth to the lot? Yeah.
So because you have frontage, and if you had two very closely spaced streets, you could have very small depth, but otherwise, you're not going to. And because of light, typical way to do a 20 is to have a... A, I can't come up with a word I want, a peninsula at the back, so you get light partway into the middle. So I think it's okay. And the, I mean, the other comment from comments I made is, this does deal, I mean, made last time. Is this does deal with the question of ownership and rental, potentially. Obviously, I understand that anybody can buy anything and rent everything. Been there, done that, actually, at Bull Vans. But it creates the option for a different kind of development, which I think is useful to our mix in Urbana. So I think this works.
Any other discussion? Are we ready to make a motion?
I move for approval of the changes.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Rose? Is there a second? Second by Ms. Sims. Any discussion on the motion? All right, it seems like we're ready to vote. Can we have a rule call, please?
Yes. Mr. Hopkins? Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Mr. Allred?
Yes. All right, that motion passes. Do we have a date for council for that one?
That should go to committee of the whole on November 4th.
All right. I want to thank staff for their work on that one. I think it's always good to see efforts to clean up and make more legible the zoning ordinance. So until we get to that zoning reform, when that ever happens, but...
Thanks.
Okay, old business. I'm assuming we have no old business, no new public hearings, no new business, audience participation. Is there anyone who wishes to address the plan commission for five minutes uninterrupted on a topic of your choice? If so, please come forward and sign in. I think there should be a sign in right there in the corner of the table. Sure, those are working, right? The mics in the stand?
It is. I just have a couple of comments related to the long-range transportation plan for Urbana.
Audrey, could you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry.
And your position.
I'm Audrey Ishi and a resident of Urbana, also a member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. It's all wonderful, the long-range transportation plan practically, well, virtually. Every project mentions as a goal, safety and reducing bicycle and pedestrian injuries and fatalities. And it's not the role of this plan to, although I know that RPC has done safety plans, which has made it its role, to talk about specific strategies for that. For example, speed is nowhere mentioned in this plan, nor should it be. I mean, this is, this is a long-range transportation plan, not a safety plan. But I would like to mention that at times, the responsibility of individual municipalities is kind of glossed over, because, again, it's not their role to be concerned with the individual municipalities. They are concerned with optimizing things across the entire region for the benefit of all the municipalities. And what ends up being a win for all is not, unfortunately, always a win for each and every community, depending on just how that happens. For example, in the existing conditions, Urbana, it's noted, Urbana had, in this five-year period, 2018 to 2022, Urbana had four pedestrian fatalities. Champaign had five. Okay, sounds like we're fairly equivalent. But actually, as all of you know, Champaign has twice the population of Urbana at a minimum, which makes our rate actually quite unacceptable per 100,000. It's on a par with El Paso, Texas, and some other horrible places. And again, you wouldn't really realize that. For total traffic fatalities, it has, Champaign has the five I just mentioned plus 12 vehicle, so 17. Urbana has the four I mentioned plus three vehicles, so eight. Now, they're somewhat comparable, right? Because one is about double the other. But you would recognize that better if they did mention things on a per capita basis, instead of just mentioning it by town. I realize it might be a little cumbersome everywhere that that's mentioned to do that computation, but it's something that's very important to keep in mind. People sort of gloss over it. The other thing is projects impacting Urbana. Now, this is where, again, it comes down to Urbana taking responsibility for Urbana. The US 150, aisle 130 from University Avenue to aisle 130, Illinois 130, IDOT came in and we had the opportunity to advocate to make that a complete street, just like they're doing on Prospect Avenue. You've probably heard about that. Between, essentially between the interstate, but all the way down to Springfield. That not all of it is going to be a complete street, I don't believe, from the interstate, but from Bradley, I believe it is. So Champaign advocated powerfully for that. Urbana actually blew off the opportunity to make University Avenue a complete street. Now, there are a lot, and that's another thing that I'd like to see a little more of in this plan, is talk about equity. This is regional. This is not just Urbana. There are a lot of communities that are outside of Urbana in that area, on University Avenue. But on a regional basis, they really matter. And there are people, Urbana has only, has 20% of the population, according to this report. 20% of the population doesn't have access to a vehicle. Do you, don't you think that a lot of those people might be living out there in some of those trailer? There's six trailer parks out there. And there's employers out there. There's people who need to be riding veobikes to get around, and they are. It would be so good for them to have bike lanes and somewhat slowed traffic on University Avenue. Right now, the track, the speed jumps up to 45, right at the school district, where a lot of people come for education. So this is a wonderful effort by the RPC, but I would like to see people realize that it does, it should be somewhat maybe pointing the finger a little bit more at the municipalities that have some power to do things. That they should be doing something, that these things don't just happen because RPC is suggesting that they should. You know, it still is on the municipalities to do something. So on this page, for example, it says ADA improvements. The crossing at Maple Street, there's no plan whatsoever to improve that crossing, where many, many people cross, people of low income, but also people from my neighborhood, which isn't particularly low income, but some people prefer to walk or to bike, and they cannot cross at Cunningham. It's simply too scary. So they go down to Maple to cross, and many people cross. And then we're trying to develop economically. There's that wonderful, but who knows about it, shopping center over there, which if people could make a safe cross and convenient crossing at Maple, that would help everyone. It would be such a win-win. Well, the ADA improvements don't include that. There's no plan to improve that crosswalk there and make it a safe and convenient crossing. These are things Urbana should have been advocating for. Now, what Urbana did get is a side path, and that's absolutely wonderful. A side path on the south side, the MTD side, up to Ambux Park, which is a disability accessible park, which ironically was totally inaccessible. So I'm merely pointing out that I think in some ways, the LRTP could make a little bit more effort to point the finger at the municipalities as to what they need to do, but we need to take it on ourselves in light of the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Ms. Hopkins?
Ask a quick question.
Sure, why not?
The part of University Avenue that you're referring to is from Cunningham to Philora, I mean, 130 High Cross?
Yeah, actually, we're interested, from the viewpoint of pedestrian access, we were thinking Guardian Drive. And it's actually in the Urbana pedestrian master plan to have a sidewalk going from there down to Main. But where's the sidewalk going to? There's nothing, nothing to connect to from there. So it was actually Guardian Drive that we were interested in the bike and complete streets approach, not all the way to the interstate, which they actually are finishing or have finished this year. That particular, they decided to split the project into two parts, realizing that the needs are very different from the ramp, you know, into, yeah.
All right, is there anyone else that wants to comment during audience participation? All right, then we'll move on to staff report. Do we have a staff report?
We do not.
All right, that brings us to our study session.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thanks. Tonight, we're going to talk about big move four, and that is strengthen downtown Urbana's role as the economic driver of the city. So I just want to say at the outset, there's a lot of people who have contributed to the information that's in this presentation. There's a lot of slides here from Examine Urbana, and Will, who I work closely with, and our colleague Tarek Azim have contributed information. It's never been sort of compiled in this way, and I'm really happy to be presenting it to you tonight, because I think it tells an important story that's relevant to the comp plan and the city in general. So this, the reason why we're focusing on big move number four is because Lou asked a question. And the question, at least the introductory part of the question, this is one of the things you put in writing, and I won't put any inflection on any of the words, although I could, is... Okay, okay, I'll put what I think Lou might put on it. So the question is, is downtown Urbana really the economic driver of the city? And so our answer is, no, it isn't, but it should be, and it has long been intended to be. So we think, we want to explain that to you. We want to explain the history of it, and also the importance of that, of downtown becoming actually the bona fide economic driver of the city, and why it's important. So I'm going to start with the big picture, so you have some context for downtown. And then I'll pause after I do the big picture stuff, see if you have any questions, and then I'll just focus on downtown, and we'll go from there. So it's hard to know where to dive in, because there's a lot of entry points to this particular topic, but I'm going to start with a brief comparison of Urbana and Champaign, because people do that all the time. So some of the feedback we get, and in fact, I think some of the comments in, on Imagine Urbana, have to do with how residents perceive both cities, and they compare and contrast. And some of those things, they really like about Urbana, the small-town feel and stuff, and they don't necessarily find that same vibe in Champaign. But there's also things that they like about Champaign in terms of accessibility of various businesses and services and stuff, that I think they would like us to replicate more. So it's, I think it's important to understand some of the major differences between the two cities. So population is relevant in this conversation, because the number of residents affects some of our federal and state allocations. It affects our income tax receipts, and affects the customer base of some of our businesses, as well as many other things, including the population of the schools and stuff like that. So Champaign's population, which was already twice that of Urbana, grew in the last census. And so you see the census numbers here on the slide, whereas Urbana's population declined. So I just want to pause here for just a second and say, we are, we are in the midst right now of a special census. And we're trying to at least regain some of what we lost. And so the, in order to do a special census, you select certain areas that's on the western edge of the city. And so anybody that's listening that is being surveyed, please respond to the census takers. But we're hoping that we can at least get more, because of, you know, with the timing with COVID and the university sending students home, we think we can pick some of that up. But what is clear is that the gap between our populations is expanding. So we didn't, we didn't know some of these numbers until recently, where Will and Tarek were collecting some information about comparability. And so we've recently realized just how different we are from Champaign. So Champaign's annual retail sales volume has reached $1.4 billion, whereas Urbana's is closer to $400 million. That's a huge difference. Champaign has almost 2,000 employers. Urbana has about one-quarter that number. Median household income in Urbana is 30% lower than that in Champaign. I note all these differences, because they all impact Urbana's ability to generate general fund revenue, among other things, which allows the city to deliver all of our basic services as our charter assigned it to us. And if later, if you want me to give any explanation of where our money comes from in terms of dedicated funds or grant money, and how the general fund relates to that, I'm happy to do that. The characteristics that distinguish Urbana, both from Champaign and from some of our peer group, include the following. Our population has an atypically high proportion of students, college students, no surprise there. This manifests itself in a variety of ways, including low household size, high transancy, high percentage of rental housing relative to owner-occupied housing, and both lower income and higher poverty levels. For the city of Urbana, as distinct from the boundaries of school district 116, we have fewer families than is typical of a similarly situated... have fewer families than is typical of a similarly situated cities of our size in Illinois, and consequently, we have fewer school-aged children, that's within the city of Urbana. Part of the goal, I would say too, just as an aside, part of the goal of the housing study will be to understand the interplay between families with children and the demands of the city, or on the city taxing bodies overall. So for example, we want to know, would District 116 be better served with more students or more money? And to the extent, and to what extent are the outcomes of the school district impacting the city's ability to attract new residents? So we want to, that's part of what we want to explore in the housing study. Urbana also has a low rate of commercial development. This is evident in a number of ways. So the retail sales numbers that I shared with you, that tells part of the story, the difference in number of employers, that tells part of the story, and further indicative of that is the fact that we lack a speculative office market. So somebody who's looking for space in Urbana, unless it's a very small space, they're not going to be able to find it, because most of the office space is purpose-built. I mean, we had County Plaza downtown, and nobody wanted to lease it, there were some reasons, I mean, it was out of date and so forth, but by and large, we don't have a speculative office market. It's purpose-built, it's owner-occupied, or it's, you know, or the tenant is identified in advance, like the county buying County Plaza and moving there. So as illustrated in the Examine Urbana metrics for the development and taxes section, downtown Urbana underperforms in terms of assessed value significantly compared to the University Avenue corridor and properties closer to campus. So in this oblique, I don't know, what do you call that, representation, the three-dimensional bars are, reflect, the higher they are, the more value they reflect in terms of equalized assessed value, and so you see it skews very much to the west and up north along University Avenue, so it's closer to campus. There are substantial properties in downtown, and I'll focus in on this in a little bit, that perform at the lowest levels, less than $25,000 per acre in equalized assessed value versus the higher-level properties that I just mentioned in the tall green bars, that exceed 200,000 and much higher in EAV per acre. We all need to understand what drives demand for various uses in Urbana, and are we, from a land use perspective, as well as an economic development perspective, doing what we can to accommodate that demand, or in some cases, attract that demand? So one of the things I thought was very, I thought it was very clear that from a staff perspective and from the plan commission's perspective, we're on the same wavelength, are the changes that you approved from going from B3U to CMU, and you recognized that how much of a driver the university is for housing, and those changes were intended to accommodate that demand. So this is in the vein of what I'm talking about, which is recognizing the demand and then trying to meet the demand. I also want to talk about the fact that one, over one-quarter of the land in Urbana is tax-exempt. So this is a, we rack and stack it different ways, but this particular illustration shows in pink, the tax-exempt land parcels, including rights-of-way. It's more than a quarter even without the rights-of-way, so we're not sort of padding the narrative at all with that, but that's an awful lot. These relate to a variety of users, I mean, you can see the universities there, Carl Foundation Hospital, OSF Hospital, we have municipal-type users, we have the Mass Transit District, we have the Park District, which we have plenty, plentiful parkland, we're blessed with a lot of parkland in Urbana, we have the Urbana-Champaign sanitary district also, and then that doesn't even include the tax-exempt uses related to Urbana's status as the Champaign County seat, and all those county-related properties, as well as the federal courthouse, and so on. So it's a lot. So from an economic sustainability perspective, that means that it is extremely important that the non-exempt land be financially productive. It has to, all of these uses utilize much of the infrastructure, and we have to maintain the infrastructure on the backs of the 75% or so of properties that are not tax-exempt. So, and it's even more important that the land be productive from a property tax perspective if you are one of the taxing bodies that is property tax-dependent, like the school district and like the library. So I'm going to show you another slide, because I want to drive this point home. This is a slide from Examine Urbana, and this is from a discussion about how Urbana has grown, or not grown, in recent years. So what you can see on this slide is that from 1970 to 2020, our population increased 13%. The number of road miles increased almost 145%. So we're certainly not gaining population through annexation, we're gaining infrastructure responsibility through annexation, and I'm going to show you another, so I'm showing, this is a little bit different than the slide I showed you, the three-dimensional slide I showed you before, I will come back to this in a minute, but we've annexed land on which much of this roadway network exists, this new roadway network, and that additional land has not added significantly to the tax base. So this is also from Examine Urbana, this reflects the revenue in terms of property tax revenue per acre, minus the cost of putting the infrastructure in to support that use. That's done with, you know, kind of ballpark numbers, it's not, you know, super precise, because it wasn't all installed at the same time and so forth, but it gives you a sense of how productive is this land relative to the infrastructure that you need to support it? And you see all along the perimeter, which is where the annexation took place, that's very low production relative to the infrastructure. So we've increased in size geographically, and population per acre has declined. So here's yet another slide. This is also from Examine Urbana. If you see the kind of green, or the light green, I'll call it, shows how we've grown from 1970 to 2020, we went from 5.3 square miles to 11.9 square miles, and at the same time, our population per square mile has declined, and so it's basically, we more than doubled the amount of land we had, and we cut the population per acre in half. So clearly, we're not annexing to gain population, and so you have to, if we go back to this slide, you have to ask yourself, if annexation is about making the city more sustainable, whether that's from an environmental standpoint or from an economic standpoint, did this strategy work? And a different way to frame it is, when's it going to work? Because it hasn't worked in, how many years is that? 50 years? So that is the kind of thing that makes us think about, what should the goals of the comp plan be, particularly relative to annexation, but also relative to the infrastructure we've already invested in? Okay, so that's the overview. Before I go into downtown, I just want to pause, does anybody have any questions about what I covered so far? Okay, so that was just to provide a frame for the rest of this conversation, so I want to talk about downtown. So the evolution of downtown, or the Central Business District, dates back a long time. I mean, there was a train station, there was a courthouse, I'm not sure how everything decided to coalesce where it did, but those are things that anchored people's, you know, commerce and stuff in the city, and it has been reinforced by zoning probably since zoning existed, but on this map, in the middle, this is a zoning map of the entire city, in the middle, you see some purple, I know you're familiar with it, that's the B4 Zone District, it's designated as Central Business District Zone, it was created in 1950, and it's not mapped anywhere else in the city, B4 is not. And this is a close-up, and it is the highest-density zone in the city. So from a zoning perspective, we said, this is where we want development concentrated, we want the highest density in downtown. So typically, you'd expect that zoning density would lead to a higher concentration of uses. Traditionally, in downtowns, that would be commercial, taller buildings, more tax revenue. None of this is true for Urbana's downtown, and we think that represents a missed opportunity. So another representation of what's happening, or more to the point, not happening in downtown is this map. So this parking map was developed as part of a study of parking downtown that was prepared in 2018. For tonight, I know we would love to talk at some point about parking downtown and the study, because probably not a whole lot has changed, but the only takeaway I want you to have from this map tonight is that downtown has a lot of vacant sites, a lot of open lots that, you know, we happen to park on. So how does that help to generate revenue for the city beyond the obvious meter revenue for city-owned lots and the other taxing districts? In terms of those bars, it doesn't add anything, so we're, these are all, in some ways, lost opportunity. I'm not suggesting that every parking lot needs a building on it, but there's, given that the overall message of the parking study was we have adequate, more than adequate supply, we certainly have, we have ample supply of sites for development. So now, let's go back to that revenue minus cost analysis and hone in on downtown. So before I, and this is that represented in sort of a linear form, so there's a couple of things I want to point out, and then I'll actually show you how the bars look for downtown. So certain properties, you'll see downtown is indicated in several of the higher bars, some of the properties downtown are doing well in this comparison, but I also want to just point out that the highest production uses are apartment buildings, and so I'm going to come back to that, I'm going to come back to that at the end. So now, if we look at a close of the citywide map that I showed you, this is the oblique view, and then we're going to, and this is the definite overhead view, so you can see some things there. So just for reference, can you, yeah, you can see that, so that's Schnucks, where the arrow is right now, and this is Lincoln Square Mall.
Yeah, can I jump in for a second?
I wish you would.
Sorry, I clearly somehow, this should be shifted west a block, sort of a large block, and then south a large block, because, yeah, it's kind of, I think when I drew it, it got skewed somehow, so. Imagine this whole dotted area being shifted southwest, because that upper-right corner should sort of be where that big white cross is, because that's five points.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Yeah, and let's revise it so that we have a good slide. So what you can see, and what was evident in the oblique slide, is that some properties are doing okay downtown from a property tax basis, and some are not, and you can see that some of the underperforming properties are the parking lots that we saw, and you can also see that one big one is Lincoln Square Mall. So I'm just going to say a couple of words about Lincoln Square Mall, from a, just from a production, economic production standpoint. So these are some of the, I went over to the, I went over to the library about, I don't know, a year, year or two ago, because I wanted to understand what was happening in Urbana when this whole idea to build the mall came about, and these articles are from 1961, so what happened was, there was, there were, I call them town fathers, right? The individuals who were in, I would say, positions of power and authority, but who were very well-respected by the community, and they largely, in secret, assembled the blocks that we think of the nine-square blocks as Lincoln Square Mall and the city-owned parking lots, and this in 1961, and they went and they courted Carson Perry Scott, that wasn't their first choice, but that's who they ended up with, and then this was when they were starting to reveal the grand plan. So it's really interesting to go back and read these articles, but I did want to, I did want to read a quote from the Rockford Morning Star article that was from 1961. So this is now a quote. "Urbana has about 30,000 residents, 1961, and Champaign has about 50,000. But the question arose, where do these people shop? At Urbana's Association of Commerce Building, Charles Ziproth, the mayor knows who that guy is, you might know who that guy is, executive secretary of the Urbana Association of Commerce, doesn't hedge about the answer. Urbana was claiming 27% of local retail trade while Champaign was getting 73%." Okay? Now, that was downtown to downtown, but I just want to remind you about the numbers that I told you earlier. So based on the numbers, we are currently getting 21%. In 1961, we were getting 27%, and Champaign is getting 79%, okay? Now, I don't say that because I'm advocating for a return, like, let's go head-to-head with Champaign and try to compete on retail, but it does speak to the reason why Lincoln Square Mall was built and was a tremendous economic driver until, you know, Marketplace got built. It was built because it was intended to be an economic engine for the city, and that's what the individuals who agreed to sell their family homes to be included in the development, that's what they expected. So I just share that with you. Now, I've referenced a lot of information in Examine Urbana that uses property tax information, because that's readily available, but we have some more limited information available using sales tax data, and this gets at one of the additional comments that you made. We just put it together, we just put it together. Now, this is 2018 information, we're trying to do the same for 2024, so it's, we worked and worked and worked, because we knew this was important to you, Lou, and it's important to us, too. So this graph, bar chart, contextualizes downtown among the other sub-markets as a generator of sales tax revenue using home rule sales tax. So sales tax is charged in conjunction with food and beverage tax also, so this is a rough approximation, I mean rough approximation, of the relative use taxes generated across these sub-markets for multiple types of commercial properties.
I'm interested in this. Repeat that again, of what's, what is the approximation involved there? It doesn't include the beverage and food taxes, or?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't explicitly. This is the home rule sales tax, and I don't know if that's something that we'll be able to, we can't report certain things individually, we have to aggregate them. I don't know if we'll be able to get food and beverage and state sales tax, or if we, or if this is the limit of the information that we have. Maybe. We're going to keep working on it.
So this also doesn't include Urbana's share of state sale tax comeback?
It doesn't, but those.
Those would be parallel, they would be, because they're essentially on the same base, different rates.
Yes.
So the percentage should be exactly the same.
Yes, for things when we're just talking exclusively sales tax. Now, we also have sales tax that's charged in conjunction with food and beverage tax, so if one of these sub-markets was super-heavy in food and beverage, it might be throwing it off, okay?
Okay, good, got it.
Okay, so then.
Just clarification, so food and beverage is restaurants and bars, is that where we're?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, anything else? Okay, yes, restaurant and bar. So as you think about how some of this might translate into Imagine Urbana, for big move number four, I want to share some of the results of the 2018 visioning exercise for the nine-square blocks that are privately and publicly owned, that are Lincoln Square Mall and the parking lots, that was, I think Kevin was the lead on that exercise. So these are just excerpts, so if you would like to be sent the four-page summary that has all of the great takeaways from that exercise, I'd be happy to share. But so these, this slide shows two things. On the left, what would you like to have at the On the left, what would you like to have at the site, meaning this nine-square-block site in the future? And you see, it's heavy on farmer's market, restaurants and cafes, park and open space, performance space, retail, recreation, food trucks, art, gathering space. What is the single biggest change you would like to see at Lincoln Square? That's on the right, so start from the bottom up. Business, hotel, we're working on that one. Parks and green space, dining and food, entertainment, gathering. You see some commonalities in those. And so here's another, here's another slide that reflects the feedback. And this is a little hard to read. Again, if we gave this to you in hard copy, it would be easier to read. But what you see is the colors, there were, the suggestions were put in different categories. So for instance, blue is infrastructure. And then the size of the, whatever the words are, reflects the number of times it was mentioned. So obviously, farmer's market is a big thing, but connectivity is a big thing, because it says, connect Green Street through, and it says, connect Broadway Avenue through. So connectivity was big, housing was big, and green space was big, along with, as I said, the farmer's market. So I also want to talk about, in addition to the fact that, you know, we concentrated the B4 zoning downtown, because that was our intention to have the highest density downtown, we also have tax increment financing districts, which I can also explain if anybody is unaware of how they work. But the one I want to focus on is the blue one, which is the central TIF, which is downtown. So here, and most of the upper part is Crystal Lake Park, and that's not where the meat of this is happening, so most of it is the lower section. This TIF will be in place until December 31 of 2040. So here, we have also said, we're creating a tool, and our taxing, the fellow taxing districts have said, we want you to create a tool that will incentivize development in this area. So here, we have all these things saying downtown is, we want development, we want density, we want mix of uses, we want, we want more. And so the last thing that I'll just hearken back to, I won't go to, I won't go back to the slide, but in the linear version of the revenue minus cost, where you saw the bars that were the highest bars, those were apartment buildings. So there's this huge opportunity, we've been trying to pursue some of these opportunities downtown, to build housing. That's, that, you know, things have sort of evolved. We never had a traditional commercial office market, so we don't have leftover office buildings that we now have to retrofit, we just have parking lots. So, you know, bringing housing downtown helps to satisfy a whole bunch of the other moves. And so it builds the property tax base, it builds the income tax base, it provides a customer base for businesses that can be downtown or on the edges of downtown. It helps with placemaking. It may, it would, we have a tremendous resource that our consultant on the public realm plan noted that some communities we just absolutely kill for, is we have grocery stores downtown. They are already there. Usually, people, you build some apartment buildings, they're like, oh, we have to get in our car and drive 10 miles to go to the grocery store. You can walk to the grocery store already in downtown Urbana. That is a huge asset. And then walkability, right? So all these things. So from a zoning perspective, TIF, the opportunity through vacant lots, the land that's owned by the city, this all reinforces the opportunity that we have, the need, hopefully I've outlined the need that we have, but also the longstanding intention that we have to make downtown an economic driver. So happy to answer any questions. This is, downtown, to me, has been, since I moved here from the East Coast, and it has just been so frustrating to me that we can't do more faster downtown. But I'm hoping that with the changes in the comp plan and continued focus, good use of the asset that the TIF is, and just increased interest on the part of individuals to want to live in a more urban setting that's walkable, and yet still has, and still will have, because I know, you know, Urbana is Urbana, a really good feel, a good vibe. And so hopefully, we can move in the direction, and we think Big Move number four is hugely important to realizing a lot of the other moves in Imagine Urbana. So happy to answer questions.
Great, thanks for the presentation. Lots of great information in there. Any questions for staff? Ms. Dropkins? Well, I can start if you don't want to, but you can go ahead.
Go ahead, now you start.
All right. There's a couple of things that jumped out to me. So I think, like Lou, when I read Big Move number four, what sort of stuck with me, or what, sort of, not rubbed me the wrong way, it's not that big of a deal, but the idea, the way that it's stated is kind of different than what you just said, which I think is important. So you just said that you want, that we want to make downtown an economic driver. And I think that's the key thing, right? So the way Big Move number four is written right now, to strengthen downtown Urbana's role as the economic driver of the city, just goes against all of the data that you just presented. So if there's a business that is in one of these other locations that, you know, is so productive and such a benefit and an asset for the city, we're essentially telling them they're not as important as this place that is not performing as well. So I think all of this is great, and it makes sense to try and encourage this kind of development in downtown. But I just think we want to be careful about how we're wording things, so that we're not suggesting one area is more important than other areas in the city when the revenue numbers don't support that currently.
I'm just going to give you, I'm going to respond. I'm not intending to be argumentative in this response. I'm just, I just want to tell you why we selected the wording that we did. And that is, that's what I tried to show, that the longstanding intention is that downtown is the economic driver, the economic driver, because we have concentrated, we have concentrated density, we haven't been able to achieve it, but our goal, as reflected in the zoning, is that we want to concentrate development there, and the fact that we very intentionally created a TIF downtown, and we have the Cunningham Avenue TIF four, that'll be expiring at the end of next year. We have said, and it doesn't mean that the other areas are not important to us, they're clearly important to us, because we derive benefits from them, and the benefits are not strictly economic, but that's kind of what we're talking about tonight. But that's where our intentionality has gone to downtown. The other stuff happens kind of on its own.
Right. So, but I think what's missing is the intentionality piece. So it would be better to word it as, Big Move number four as, make downtown Urbana the economic driver of the city. So this is aspirational.
Okay, great, I like it.
As opposed to.
I thought you were going to pick it, I thought you were going to want to substitute for a different word. I like it.
No, I think what we've, what we've got stuck on is the idea that the city is saying something that isn't true, essentially, right? So.
I got you.
Okay. So can I say my other thing, or did you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, that part, maybe not this part. So the other thing, so, yeah, so we have all of this, you know, vacant land that's available for development, and I know the city has done RFPs for some of the city-owned property. You know, I don't see, there's nothing in the little moves for Big Move number four to suggest that there are regulatory barriers to development downtown. And so I just want to make sure that that's not something that we're not addressing, if there are, that that's something that, you know, eventually gets on the agenda of staff, that we need to remove those, kind of in the way that we did for the CMU district.
I don't, I don't, Kevin, what do you think? I don't think.
No, and I mean, that's one thing that's always frustrated me, is that we removed parking requirements back in 2005 or something like that for downtown. So that's not an issue. That's, that was actually very good, because pretty much everything that's good that's happened downtown since then, a lot of that stuff couldn't have happened if they had to meet our old parking requirements. You know, you want to put in a new restaurant, you couldn't have done that if you had to meet the parking requirements. Anyway, I digress. Floor area ratio is nine, so you could build a nine-story building covering the entire lot. Nobody is doing that. So from a zoning perspective, I don't see anything. I mean, there's no setback requirements, so there's no friction caused by the zoning ordinance, which, you know, usually is something we run into everywhere else in town. So that's not the issue. So it's got to be something else.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Dropkins?
So I wrote down the "an economic driver" when you said it, exactly as Dustin. But I'm going to push back a little harder on the second issue. If you look at the data, so Champaign gets 1.4 billion retail, we get 400 million. I will be willing to bet that very little of Champaign's retail comes from downtown Champaign.
I agree.
And I would also be willing to bet that almost none of ours does. But we're saying that we want to solve our economic problem by claiming and making even downtown the economic driver. So number one, you're right, it really isn't. But I think we have to think a whole lot more carefully about whether it makes sense to keep beating our heads and being frustrated even more years than some of us have been around with the idea that it's the only way to go, because I think that's a big mistake. I think if we're going to talk about the economic drivers of the city, and thinking about how to improve the ratios for infrastructure costs versus property taxes versus retail revenue, which are two main sources, other than grants and so on, that we need to think of the whole city as the economic driver. Because by the data you've just shown us, clearly the best way quickly to generate more revenue is apartments near the university. We put out a request, an RFP in March for development downtown and got no responses. Regulatory restrictions apparently are not the reason. Maybe we don't have the right understanding of the role that different parts of the community play in generating that income. So not only did I say, with the right intonation, is downtown Urbana really the economic driver, clearly not. But the second, I think I also said, I can't find my written stuff here, is, should it be, should that be the way we look at it? And I think we're making a mistake. Now, that doesn't mean that "an economic driver," it doesn't mean that we should ignore the fact that we got all these parking lots, some of them city-owned. It doesn't ignore the fact that we should think about ways to improve downtown Urbana. But I don't think putting all our cards there makes any sense. And I think the comp plan needs to take that into account.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
So there is no other part of Urbana, as we sit here today, with the exception of TIF four, which is going away, where we also haven't had big opportunities to make a difference in recent years. There is no place else where we have the opportunity to be as intentional, because we don't have the tools, anyplace but downtown Urbana. So most other things that we could do, well, we could create another TIF, which is challenging. It's also challenging, you know, given the size of the staff we have, it's challenging to manage multiple TIFs with intentionality. We have resistance in areas that might be attractive to the demand for housing where you mentioned. So we have limitation. You all did, I think, a fabulous job in changing the B3U. I think that was great. And so that's going to, you know, hopefully make a difference. A lot of what is impeding us right now from attracting development to downtown Urbana is not based on demand from, I'll say, consumers. It has to do with, it has to do with attracting, you know, it has to do with the cost, you know, the cost of building has gone up so much, it has to do with the cost of money. And then it has to do with attracting investors of a size, having a product that institutional investors will invest in. I mean, it's actually, we're seeing it playing out to some extent, and we saw it play out with the hotel. I mean, there were, there were people that had ideas but couldn't back it up with the finances. We got an investor, the initial investor was out of Washington DC, where I'm from, and brought out-of-town money. The Gather Project was done by Graham Rail, that's money out of Texas. We have to, we have to figure out how to attract resources, financial resources, development resources, to Urbana to get some of this done. I mean, we're learning more about what we need to do. I think the fundamentals are actually here, it's just we have to figure out how to overcome some of the financial challenges that are the cost which everybody's facing, the, and the fact that, you know, we have some local developers, some of whom have, you know, they are at that level, they have, you know, they have that, their portfolios are large enough, but they're, they're working across the country. They have to figure out how to fit this in, or to attract people from out of town. So we're learning about that. But I would just say, unless we're going to challenge some of the longstanding sentiment, as is reflected in the zoning ordinance, we don't have a lot of opportunities to be as intentional to drive the economic development of this city in any other place besides downtown on that scale.
Gather is not downtown.
No, I was just using that as an example of.
I know, but it was one of the successes. So what I'm saying is, the way this is worded, it implies, number one, that, it says downtown is the driver, is the economic driver, which we know is not true. And the economic driver is the university, Carl, from one sense. The economic drivers for the retail, in our case, are three outlying big-box stores. The retail for Champaign, none of it is downtown. I don't think, I'm trying to think what you can buy in downtown Champaign. So we need to be thinking about the whole mix of revenue sources, of how the city develops, where these things are, and think about, the comp plan is about the whole city. Much of what you're describing for downtown is fine. It's framing it as, I think that's the other thing I said in my notes, it's not only downtown. A comp plan can't say, we're working only here. And that's what Big Move four seems to say.
I understand. And we will, we will try to come up with language that is, that meets, that meets both of our needs. I don't disagree with you. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we ignore the other parts of the city, but we don't have the same tools as.
I get it.
Yeah.
So the way, if you think about how they. So the way, if you think about how the LRTP was just presented, the way I would imagine this being presented is an economic development opportunity is downtown. We've got big ideas that we need to fix, I can't remember which one it is, but we need to fix our sustainability fiscally, environmentally, and socially. Downtown is one of the places to do that. The way we do it downtown by steps is we've got a TIF. We've got this, we've got, and the data you used here to back it up tell us those things. That's, I'm agreeing with you, but saying we need to present it in a very different way.
I, and I appreciate that because I do, I do believe we're in agreement, and it's just about how to express it. So we're going to work on that. Because we're in agreement, we want to just build on that.
Ms. Sims?
So I want to suggest, and this is not necessarily that we're in having discussion, so I'm not sure. I think we might need to broaden the tools around some integrative funding. So I will say as a consumer of downtown, one of the things, and I'm privileged to travel a lot, keeping our, keeping and incentivizing the development that does come while waiting, because there's a gap between the development that is currently there, the development, there are not enough resources to sustain, like retail, restaurants, those kinds of things, you know? And when you're, if you, I was out on Sunday and, you know, we were looking for a place to go. So we tried the new African restaurant, wanted a drink, everything was closed at nine o'clock, you know, downtown. And so I'm an adult in other cities. I could go and find a drink after dinner on a Sunday. That would be a normal, typical thing. So how do we incentivize or think about other tools that make downtown marketable? So that people, because what happens is you go and you try and experience, and if it's not enjoyable, you just choose a different place, or you, I know for myself, I just say, why do I do things here, right? Or, or you guys know this, culturally Champagne is really struggling to attract multicultural professionals because of stuff like that. Like, I can move to other places and have a life and a social life. So I guess that's my long-winded saying is there are planning issues. There's also equity and cultural issues that you need to think about. And I think that maybe you need to broaden the tools to think about what is it that we're trying to create? I, when I moved to Champagne, I moved to Champagne thousands of years ago, so 20 years ago. And we moved here because I had a young child who was in the third grade, and I was looking for a place with third-center activities, right? So vibrant spaces for families and community to come together. And I anticipated that Champagne would be more like Evanston. And it has never been like Evanston, right? So it has always been, and then we get all of the complications that come when children don't have places to play and adolescents don't have places and there are no natural places to gather. So I guess my long-winded way of saying, I want us to broaden who we think we're attracting, how we're attracting them, and what are the strategies to create the kinds of environments that are competitive, right? So if we think college, competitive towns, we do not match, we don't match Ann Arbor. We don't match any of the places that I know my peers would want to consider. And so more tools. And that it has to build capacity while you're growing the other pieces.
Yeah, I just want to respond to that. I, I understand the idea of having more tools. TIF is a very special tool. We, we are the stewards of the, of the TIF dollars, most of which are not ours, right? They belong to the taxing districts and they, and we, Urbana, there's three, there's three pieces that Urbana gets. It's between 12 and 13% of the property tax bill. The city of Urbana only gets three and a half cents of every dollar. So we're spending, you know, we're the stewards of other people's money. And we don't have a lot of other sources of money. The general fund would be the other source of money if we didn't get a grant to, to, to provide other incentives. And that's why we rely so heavily on TIF, because we don't have, we don't have general fund resources to add to it. I just wanted to, to say that. I'm not saying that you're in any way wrong. More would be better, of course. And some of the things that you're saying, you know, I, I come from Washington DC. I actually watched, I was there long enough. In 1991, they changed the zoning ordinance in DC that required housing to be built downtown. There's a lot of drama because the developers said, we're never going to make any money on this. That change and the incremental nature of it and people embracing that has made downtown, the eastern half of the downtown in Washington DC a 24-hour place to be. And that would never have happened without a critical mass of housing downtown, which is why we feel so strongly about trying to attract housing downtown, because it's customers for restaurants and bars, you know, just running into the evening because there's enough people there to support it. So yeah, if we could, if we could figure out some tools in the meantime, but housing is so critical. And like I said, I've, I've seen the, the change that can happen. And I think we can, it'll happen in Urbana. It's just going to, it's just going to take a while. And we're trying to figure out some of the pieces and parts that we can influence.
Ms. Yu?
So how is it working out for the housing department right north of city building?
Yeah, you want to give that, you want to?
You're talking about 200 Vine? When they had the grand opening or the ribbon cutting, they were already fully, fully leased at that time. The demand was such that they were fully leased before they even made their big announcement that they were opening. So, and what we've, in talking with the, the owners, it's been a mix of people. I think people were afraid it was going to be student housing. Yeah, I think there's probably some grad students there, but they have professionals, they have doctors at Carl living there. It's really a mix. There's families living there. So it's been what we would say a successful project.
So why that one worked out so well, some of our other parking lot are not able to develop in similar fashion?
And are you referring to Illinois Street? I mean, I'm not afraid, not.
Any, any of those other parking lots?
Well, we've only had, we've only gone out for a bid on the Illinois Street project.
Let's just go back to the, the one that makes it happen on the 200 Vine Street. What make, what made that happen? What does city do right to make that happen?
I'll live for a dollar.
All three. Tell them about all three.
So that one was right when I started at the city and I worked in economic development. So I have a little, little bit of history of that one. I think we went out for an RFP for that site three times before we found a successful bidder. And so a lot of that was understanding a lot of local dynamics, getting to know from the local developers, what were they looking for, what style of housing would be work for them? And incentives helped get that over the finish line too. So it was a long process that took a couple failed attempts, talking with people who were interested, seeing exactly what it was. A lot of its timing, I think with Illinois Street, there's the, you know, the cost of borrowing money is difficult. So you have to find the right size and different sizes have different types of equity investors. And so it's a tough, it's a tough market to, you know, I think have that style of development. I think it takes patience and time and working with developers to figure out what the right mix is and what the financial gap is. So that's maybe the long-winded answer is it takes time and a lot of effort to figure out what the right mix is for that site.
I'll just add on Illinois Street. When the RFP was released, it was on OpenGov, and so we can see who downloaded the RFP. Good indicator that if they don't download it, they're not interested. We then went after, we had a couple that we talked with during that process that actually came in and gave us their plans and ideas. They never did officially submit. So after the, the RFP closed, we extended it once because we thought we were having, somebody needed more time. They asked us for it but didn't submit. So then after that, we looked at who had downloaded, what developers downloaded, because a lot of people downloaded their subcontractors, et cetera, wanting to know, hey, maybe I can get, you know, jump on and get on that team. But anyway, we followed up with those developers that had, had expressed interest or downloaded and individually, like getting actual input from them of why they didn't. Carol did a great job of summarizing most of those reasons why they didn't. We did even have some of the local developers talked about, well, I don't know what my property taxes are going to be on that property after I build something like that. So that's another maybe more localized reason. But it really, most of them had to do with, they just had other projects going at the time. In fact, they even apologized, oh, I just couldn't get to it. Other reasons, as Carol mentioned, the investors, that's a big thing, is trying to find the investors that, that are going to help out on that project. But there was some interest, but just never got, got to that point. So we're trying to regroup, you know, what, what can we make? How can we make that more attractive to those developers? What are the reasons that would get them to submit and try to go from there? But like Will said, it's a, it's a trial and error to try to get, try to attract that type of development.
I think it's understandable it will take time, but we, we do see progress. We see that beautiful apartment complex built. We see the county plaza being revitalized. We're expecting hopefully the hotel to open soon. So I think I really do agree with you guys. It's, let's put it this way. It's a missed opportunity now, and it represents one of the biggest potentials. So be patient and keep working on it. I really appreciate that.
We appreciate that. And then also, you know, as Carol mentioned, how we really need this density downtown to try to attract even, you know, whatever businesses that we can. But do want to point out that H Mart, you know, will be opening hopefully in the next month or two. And their construction's almost to the finish point. That's going to be something that we hope that will be a driver to bring additional people downtown and getting.
Now you've got the incentive for people to build more apartments here.
That's right, yeah.
There's so many grocery stores you have.
That's right. It's kind of the chicken and the egg. You know, you've got to have one to get the other, so.
Any other comments, Ms. Rose?
My takeaway from this is that it is an emphasis on housing. I mean, if we, if we're to say there's a, a driver at work, we would prioritize housing over retail development or office development. And I just wonder if that, if that's reflected appropriately in this. When I read about the housing needs, I, I, it comes off as we're, we're a city. Of course, we do housing and we need to do it well. When in fact, what you seem to be saying is that if, if, if something is to drive economic development, the spearhead of that would be housing. I'd like to know if that's true enough in your estimation, that it should be rephrased in this? Or that if we in the planning commission should, should imagine a, a future where accommodating housing as a spearhead is, should be a focus for us?
I think that's a really interesting observation on your part. I hadn't thought about it like that, and I'm going to spend some time reflecting on it. But I, I do think for, you know, we could, we could talk about the different types of properties in, you know, broad categories, like industrial and commercial office and retail of various kinds and, and housing. And my, you know, I've, I've been economic development adjacent for basically my entire career in various capacities. So I feel like I'm, you know, and I'm, and I love cities. So I feel like I have some credibility on, on the subject about what, what's Urbana's future. And, you know, we're not, we're not going to be building a lot of industrial. I, I just don't see that. As I mentioned, we don't have a speculative office market. I don't see us developing a speculative office market. I mean, we have to compete with the research park and that, and we can't, right? So, so what does that leave us? That leaves us retail of a couple kinds. You know, the sort of regional type or the more localized type. I think we're a lot better at the local type. And we have, we probably have as much regional retail as we're going to get with, you know, maybe we'll get a Menard someday. Let's all just, you know, pray for that. So all of the, you know, the, the more local retail thrives with a, a very, a customer base that has good access. And when I say that, I mean, they're close by. So I really think that building a mix of housing in, in Urbana, and I mean, a mix of types and, and affordability levels, I think that's going to be where, where Urbana is going to really show progress over the next certainly 10 years. And, and again, and I like the way that you put it, Ms. Yu, is that this is the biggest opportunity that we have, and it's the biggest lost opportunity that we have had over time. So I think that's why we're emphasizing it so much is because there's so much potential downtown compared. It's not that there isn't potential other places, it's just that there's so much downtown and there's so much need. But I, I do want to reflect on, on your question more.
Then to develop that, housing can be broken down, just like, like retail.
Sure.
And we seem to say there's student housing here. And the housing that's here may have grad students or professionals or whatever. But it seems to me that if, if the intent is to grow, we might look at where, where the, the most likely investment might be. Perhaps, let's say, for example, that that would be students. Can that sponsor then a growth kind of outward? And, and would it change the nature of housing? I'm, 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 I'm saying sort of the same thing I said first. It sounds like from what you said, it's a spearhead. But if it is, then there might be a mechanism which if we understood it in a way that, that we're, we're correctly dealing with student housing, family housing, low-income housing, we could, we could see how one could help another.
Yeah, I, I, there's, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot there to be kind of threads to be pulled. And I'm, I'm interested, and we're going to talk more about that. One of the things that I think we would like to be able to do more of is, you know, people are moving, you know, I don't know, I don't know if it's going to hold up, but some people still get to work remotely. And they're looking for places to live that are affordable, that have amenities, that have character, right? And, you know, and we should be mindful of being, becoming a place that can attract those types of workers who just want to, just want to, you know, like, and there's so many people. How many people do you know in Urbana talk about the vibe of Urbana, like, I just really like it here? Like my neighbors, I like the feel of the place. That's what we, you know, like, how do we package that up and sell it to people to say, move here, you want to experience this, right? We want to reinforce it through the comp plan. So there's, there's definitely a lot to unpack from, you know, your question.
That's what I want to just keep saying. You know, so if you think Shaker Heights, right? Everybody knows it's sort of the model of mixed income, multiracial, multicultural, very diverse, vibrant community. It's spent, right, it catched its chips on equity. People want to be there for that as a driver. And I feel like we don't language what is it that we're creating, right? Because I could think about a lot of economic reasons, right? Like we, to me, you don't drive a conversation around student housing because you don't have to. The thing that attracts maybe people, that could attract people to Urbana is the culture and climate about what it's committed to. But I don't feel like we language that enough. And also I feel like we're not aware of the diversity of migration. So again, I've talked about racial diversity, there's economic diversity. I know if I'm talking to the Up Center, there are so many new gay and lesbian families who are moving here for safety and equity. You know, when you think about reimagining Champagne County.
You know, when you think about reimagining Champagne County, I just don't think that we're thinking about who and what they would be looking for with intentionality. So housing, but housing looks very different if you're thinking 30, 40 people, or, you know, 40, the demographic, the age, the 20, how we're working is different, what we expect when we're coming from other communities. So I want, one, to think that way. And the other piece around tools, communities that I've seen this do it well have partnered with community development grants. We've also got to have a huge prioritization of economic development with small business. So that's when I was talking about the other tools. I'm thinking beyond just planning. It's the, to me, when we fragment this conversation, we're not thinking about the whole. When you're investing in building small business, you increase capacity for people to want to be here. So when I was saying, how do we think about more than just tax incentives, but other tools to help plant and invest and mentor that keep people here but also keeps their dollars here? So it's a blending of strategies, not purely planning, you know, so. And that's what builds communities that have people stay and invest and stick around and become that capital. So I thought Shaker, you know, and there are so many other communities. I remember when we did Big Small All, we had some visions of other communities that we wanted to be like, and we just sort of had mission and vision drift and have lost a sense of sort of identity and languaging that. And so to me, when I think about what our plan is, it is around articulating a vision for Urbana that is unique and driven and purposeful, and, you know, that's why I'm here, right? Like, and so, and how do we get around that and not just think about what's possible now?
Any other comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We are at 9:15. I know we have another.
I was just gonna say, Kevin might talk about what we're gonna cover, the next meeting in the study session, the topics, since our meeting got canceled last time.
Yeah, so if I recall correctly, we'll be talking, and I think this will be a nice follow-up to this, we'll be talking incremental development. We'll be talking about walkability, and there's one more. We'll be talking about one more. Is that right? Connectivity. There we go. So just a preview for our next planning commission meeting.
So we also dropped off the future land use descriptions on the third that we missed.
Oh, yeah, that'll be there.
Coming back around then, too?
Yeah, that'll be there.
Okay. Do we have more tonight then, or no? Oh, I thought that we were doing this, or there was something related to this?
Yeah. I think we were just, we were just-
Oh, okay. Got it. Well, thanks, everyone. We are adjourned.
All right, thanks.